Okay, being that it is past six o'clock and we have a quorum, I'd like to call the City of Manaus County Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me for the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you have a roll, please?
Alderman Tomgady?
Here.
Alderman Tedgady?
Here.
Alderman Rappella?
Here.
Alderman Nichols?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Alderman Sevenix?
Here.
Alderman Langdon?
Here.
Alderman Schmidt?
Here.
All are present.
First item on the agenda is the Department of Department Heads Staff Consultants. We have the minutes in Communications this evening. Do we have a motion?
Mayor.
Alderman Sevenix?
I just caught myself yelling "here" real loud, but the city clerk is here today, so...
Yeah?
So, anyway, with that, Mayor, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive A through H and Communications I through L.
Second. The motion is second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to take a moment to congratulate Christine Jacobson on her appointment as Public Director for the City of Manaus.
She is not here this evening, but she will be here at the next meeting.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. My question was for the city attorney. We have a correspondence from Community Development Department on the whiting paper mill, and I was wondering if there's any court action, any court legal action that we can take against the company or the owner of the company to push this a little further than where we're at right now.
And what is it that you would like done?
Well, I'm asking if there's any type of further action that we could get into the court system with the whiting paper company.
What would you like a court to order?
Well, I'm not an attorney. That's why I'm asking you the question. Is there any further legal recourse we have in this situation?
As far as a court orders that the company clean it up?
That would be one of the elements, I would think, and secure the property possibly.
One of the problems is that the law does allow companies to, or people, to have companies, limited liability companies and corporations to protect them from, well, when they don't have any money to do anything, or there's nobody that is operating the business any longer. The law allows people to do that and to have those type of companies, and if there's not an operating company, there's nobody that you can, I mean, you can sue the company, but there's nobody there anymore. It's not operating, and there are no funds, no money, and so you can't, I mean, you can get a judgment, but that's not going to help. You can't force the company to do any cleanup if it doesn't exist any longer. People just walk away. That's what happens in many communities, and the law allows there to be limited, these limited liability companies and corporations, and when folks pass away or when they no longer operate the business, they just walk away and leave it, either for the community to do something about it, or as is observed in many communities, buildings just fall into decay, disrepair, and become nuisance to children, to drug addicts, to drug dealers, stuff like that. So unfortunately...
Yeah, was this the type of situation that Mr. Dance had? Did he have a LLC type of company with the whiting paper company?
The property is owned by an LLC. That is correct.
Okay. Even though Dan's Real Estate LLC is operating, that's not connected to his paper company, is that correct?
The property owner is Dan's Real Estate LLC. You all, I forgot what the operating entity was. That was a different business, and that's frequently what happens. People, they take a chance on a business, and if it fails, it fails and they walk away sometimes. It particularly happens when there's environmental conditions, and that really is a struggle for communities to have to deal with. The law allows people to have companies that are limited liability.
Does the city have?
If there were...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If there were assets that were owned by the LLC, that would be different if the assets could be sold to pay for or something. As I understand it, that is not the case. The asset is a burnt-out building.
Okay. And the property, yeah.
And there is over a half million dollars in tax due taxes and utility bills that are owed to the city and other taxing entities as well.
Does the city have any liens on this property or on this company?
Yes.
Does the city have any liens against us?
Yes, on the property.
Okay. And not on the building or anything, huh?
Yes. The building is on the property. It's all included.
Okay. Did we require him to have any type of insurance on the property? I know anytime I have a lien on something, I've always required to have insurance. So did we have any of that?
It's a private business who chooses whether or not they want to have insurance, and I'm informed that there is no longer insurance on the property. There's no, nothing to pay for it because there's not an operating business that's paying rent in order to pay for the insurance, and an individual is not held responsible because it's an LLC.
Is that something we could have required since we held a lien on the property to ensure or to protect us, that he should have had insurance on it?
No.
Okay. Appreciate you answering my questions. Thank you.
We can require insurance if we have, like, development agreements with folks or if folks are using city property and we don't want our property damaged, you know, those kinds of things. We can require insurance, but just, we could not require every single business and property owner, homeowner in the City of Manaus to carry insurance. Now, of course, we know that it's insurance.
I just stopped because we have... All right, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else, Alderman Sevenix?
Yep. So, I understand, as you recall, I asked this question last time around. I had concern that, I understand the safety, but we're expending, we spent fourteen thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty-five cents for just knocking down part of the building over there. And who made that request? Because I don't remember seeing that in our budget.
Was it a requirement from the fire department?
A requirement from the fire department.
It was that hazard is building and we needed to do something to evade that hazard.
It was still burning?
And that will be billed back to the property owner. And it'll be placed on the tax.
And then they'll pay us right away then.
Exactly.
Normally, that's what would happen, is it would be placed onto the building and...
Can I ask what fund that's going to be coming out of?
I am not sure.
Because I just asked Jennifer if we had been billed for that yet. Apparently, we haven't.
But we would, places will be on the taxes, and then at some point, the county would either make us whole on that, or we would have to...
Well, he's got to get paid. Are we paying this individual, or are we just saying, you can get it from this guy?
Do you want to explain how that works, Jennifer? Something like, can we do that?
The city would pay the bill, place the charge on the tax bill, and as you mentioned, essentially, the county would probably end up billing us back for that if you have an expense account set up. And that, for those types of issues.
Lose-lose situation there.
Yes. Yeah, could say he's in one.
And from what I've heard, there's more than a half million dollars in back taxes, interest, utilities. I heard the number is more like seven hundred thousand.
I think that's the number it is.
Okay. That, the fence, I noticed that we're probably being billed daily for that. What is that charge? Anyone got an answer?
Charges. The initial fourteen thousand covered that, I believe, through June, I believe, and then the charge, I believe, of eight hundred fifty dollars each month, I believe, for rental.
Okay, so that's, I missed the, how long does that go till?
Through June.
Through June. Okay, thank you. I mean, I don't want to put anyone on the unfortunate situation, but again, I will say that I think the day after this happened, and even though the fire department requested this, that council should have been informed that we were going to expend these dollars. No one can spend money in the city unless it comes from this body.
I understand that, but in emergency situations, we have to take action sometimes.
Right.
Typically, if it was a choice, we would bring it here if that was something that was choice. This really wasn't a choice, so...
I was just going to say the authority to determine what is necessary in order to put out a fire. Sometimes there are environmental conditions that all of a sudden arise. I know we've had a number of them since I've been here, and the health department has the ability, in those emergency circumstances, to take whatever emergency action is necessary in order to stop the immediate danger to the public. And then, from that point on, however, as in this particular case with the mill, the fence does not have to continue. The city doesn't have to do anything. They can just leave it rot. Certainly, that might not be what the city desires to do, but, you know, you drive around throughout the country, you find cities that have just left buildings. You don't have money to take care of everything, and sometimes that happens. No fences, nothing to protect it from, you know, those nefarious types of activities that have tendency to occur after something happens, and it's just a choice of the city, and sometimes cities perhaps may, you know, kind of have a list of what they're going to take care of and how they're going to do it on a priority basis. We're fortunate here in the City of Manaus, not by bludgeoning, but that there are not, you know, we don't have tons and tons of these. They come up every once in a while. But the thing that's unfortunate is that it's rolled to the taxpayers. Taxpayers end up paying them.
Add one more question, Mayor.
Obviously, it's going to be an issue for us for at least the next few years, so I'll leave it at that, because we're going to be dealing with this for some time, maybe in a positive manner, maybe in a negative manner. Let's hope in a positive manner. So, I just, you know, I don't go on Facebook. I stay on Facebook because there's so many experts out there that think they know what they're talking about, and actually, I've been told by other people that they believe the city did this. That bothers me because, if anything, this has made it harder on the city than anything, and I think the people out there have to understand that.
Very much so.
And they even accuse some of the aldermen of doing it, which is even more ridiculous. This is going to be a hardship for us, and I know that we're going to try to do everything possible to turn that disaster into a positive, so all we can do is keep looking forward and hopefully, things will come together for us. But really disappointed about the whole process. I'll just leave it at that. We're going to be dealing with that, like I said.
Something on the next agenda most likely.
Okay. And I think James still had something.
Is there something else, James?
Yes. You know, like Stan said, this may be long-term, and if we're going to continue to rent this fence, save ourselves some money because it's not going to go away anytime soon, and why should we just keep paying out a large fee for this? It's not really, it's private property, and we shouldn't really have to do this, but I guess it's a good thing because of the Lipton Lake Trail and the Trestle Trail is down in that area, and I don't know if the attraction is still going to be there for kids to play on that property, but I think we could save some money by just buying these...
Did he know?
Well, Mayor, somehow I got muted there, and instead of continuing to spend this money, we need to try to save some money here, too. So, that's what, I would like to see someone get a cost analysis on how much fence is there and what that would cost us to have the same type of fences. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any no one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any amount of public comments? Is there anyone who wishes to speak as you think?
Andrew Zabilla, Taylor, 535 Broad Street, Malaya. First things first, I have a lot of questions tonight. The first is the American Rescue Plan. I'm curious as to what funds the City of Manaus will be receiving. My understanding is that these funds are not as restricted as the CARES Act that had to be specific to COVID expenses. I know Green Bay is receiving twenty-five million, Appleton fourteen, and Oshkosh twenty, and it's based not only on population but poverty level, so I would think that we would be getting a significant amount. I would also emphasize that this should be a council decision on how to spend these funds and having the community weigh in on it. These are one-time dollars, payable twice. You may have already received a check. I know Oshkosh got ten million last week, so... Secondly, on your public works facility agenda, there is an item for roughly a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for solar panels. It's a ten-point-six-year payback. I'm curious as to what the life expectancy is, if it exceeds ten years, or are you going to be obsolete by that time? The next question, regarding the whiting mill. I'm curious if there's any disaster relief funds available, either from Winnebago County or the state, that could supplement the city, that we're not doing this all on our own. Something to look into rather than just, you know, check. Regarding the farm market, my understanding, I know it was not in the budget this year, and I believe it's being run by private group downtown, which is fabulous. The market was Thursday. Park and Rec met Wednesday to approve the application. The package did not include a certificate of insurance. I just want to be assured that all these groups are treated equally, because according to the reservation in form, they were having, selling liquor and had anticipated over a hundred people, and it said here that it would require a temporary class B license. Must be filed with the clerk at least fifteen days prior to the common council approval. You guys haven't approved it. The Park and Rec creation board approval is also needed two months prior to the event. It showed up the day before. So, and before obtaining a license, the certificate of insurance plus endorsement must be obtained. So, I just want to make sure that we're doing things appropriately so the next event is held properly. I also noticed that on the comprehensive plan update, you add a hot committee named the participants, and I'm happy to see two individuals that I know will do an excellent job, Duan Roche and Linda Soul. I am disappointed that neither one of aldermen from District One or District Two are on that committee. I don't know if they asked to be or not, but those districts are most affected by spot zoning and incompatible land use, and especially Rebecca Nichols. If she would want to be on that committee, I would prefer that she would be. Then, under personnel, we have lots of new department heads over the last few years. I'm still rather, nothing against the people who have been appointed, but I still think it is important that we look outside the city to get the best and brightest, and if there's someone in-house, fabulous. Appleton is currently doing that in the search for their new health director. They posted it in-house and outside, and I only think that's fair to do that for all departments. If someone's inside, it's just that what we're doing is only looking inside first and then looking outside if you can't find someone. I think it's only fair to the community to look everywhere. I also noticed that there's a position for a health department, oh, no, a human resources coordinator listed, ranging from sixty-four to seventy-eight thousand dollars. I thought that was the job of the attorney, so... Someone could answer. I would have a lot more questions, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion, Mr. Lee? Alderman Sevenix?
Mayor, I'm just going to make a motion for the minute, and then I think we should just go through the rest. In other words, I'd be asking the whole three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten. But this time, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the common council minutes of five seventeen twenty-one and the special common council minutes of five twenty-six twenty-one.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Motion carries. Item three is accepting the bid of Post Crescent as the official city newspaper. Do we have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I will to approve and accept the bid of the Post Crescent Media as the official city newspaper for 2021 through 2022.
Is there a second? Second. The motion is second. Alderman Langdon, any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item four is approval of the payment to Summers Construction Company Inc., contract unit number one twenty-one dash zero six. That's for the Baldwin Street reconstruction, and that in the amount of fifty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents, payment number three.
I'll second that, Mayor. Second, Mayor.
There's a motion and a second. We could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item five is a payment to Myron. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion for the approval of the payment to Myron Construction Company Inc., contract unit number twenty twenty dash zero six. That's for the public works facility construction project in the amount of seventy-five thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars seventy-four cents, payment number fourteen.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Is there a second? The motion is second. Seeing no discussion, we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item six is approval of payment to Myron.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion for the approval of the payment to Myron Construction Company, contract unit number twenty twenty dash zero six. That's for a public works facility construction project. That's in the amount of three hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars forty-six cents, payment number fifteen.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
The motion is second. Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
And motion carries eight zero.
Item seven is installation of a roof-mounted solar PV system.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion for the installation of the Faith Technologies' proposed roof mount, solar P-V system, at a cost of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, seven hundred and ninety-five, utilizing the WPPI member energy efficient and renewable loan program.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenix?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out for the public that along with this, thirty-five thousand dollars is grant money, and this evening, when we had WPPI representatives in here, it's my understanding that it will be a zero percent loan.
Seeing no further, Alderman?
Yes. If someone started, of course...
Seeing no further, Alderman?
Yes. If someone's interested in the course, could you answer that question about the life expectancy of the panels?
These specific panels, I'm not really sure of, but typically the panels for solar panels are a 15 to 20-year guarantee. And at that point, their guarantee will still be producing 5% of their, I'm trying to jump the plank on the word, their equivalent or what they're reading.
Thank you.
The Director Alex didn't note that at the last meeting. I believe it was north.
I was just rereading the memo and I didn't see it in there, so I thought I'd ask.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item 8 is rejecting the contract.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion to reject contract unit number 2021-01. That's for the street construction and rehabilitation for various streets.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
The motion is second. Any discussion?
I'll second that.
Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item 9 is awarding our street construction projects.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, if you, I'd like everybody to read, to see the 2021-01. It's supposed to be 2021-10.
Okay, just read it like that then.
Okay, then I'll make the motion to award contract unit number 2021-10, that's street construction and rehabilitation for various streets to Northeast Asphalt Inc. in the amount of $1,308,722.05.
Is there a second?
Second, that, Mayor.
The motion is second. Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item 10 is the engineering tech positions. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Alderman Grady?
I'll move to approve the engineering department's engineering technical positions revisions as indicated in the public works department's memo dated May 11, 2021.
Is there a second? I'll second. The motion is second by Alderman Grady. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item 8 is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of May 14 through June 3, 2021, in the amount of $1,815,614.56.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'd like to remove check number 71659 in the amount of $50 that is made out to Jeff Nichols for his service on Board of Review, and I will be abstaining from that. Both.
Any discussion? The motion excluding that check. Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Then we have the separated.
I didn't fill out that one.
Oh, did you miss one? Yes, we have two separate votes. So, this is on everything except that one.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, now we have basically a separated motion to approve check 71659, and Alderman Nichols is abstaining from it. We could have a roll call vote on that one, please.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Item 2 is the beverage operators' license applications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators' license applications for the 2019 through 2021 licensing period as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated June 3, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
I don't know if Mr., I'm not sure how to pronounce that. Yeravampa is here this evening? No? Do we have a motion to approve or deny the license recommended for denial?
I'll move to deny the operator's license for Esteban Miguel Terablanca.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion?
Mayor, please. Yes. I don't see anywhere on the form or anywhere what he was, why we are now letting them number four, right, but they didn't say what he did. I don't, I don't see anything what the, what this person did to not be able to be getting this.
Attorney Captain, would you like to comment? Or the Chief of General Bowleswell?
Sure. The motion is to deny based on the fact that the applicant did not provide full information about convictions. So you are not, you are not determining what those convictions are. If this is denied, you can go to the next one or, well, actually, it's just to deny outright. But it's based on the fact that the person did not include full information on the application. It's not based on what the convictions are.
But that's my question. Right. That's my question.
But that's not why you're denying it.
You, I've gotten nothing here that says anything that we are denying. He, what, the question, what did he do?
What mistakes did he make on the application?
What mistake, what didn't he tell the truth of?
I don't know either.
What did, what did he tell the truth of?
What did, what he did not include were convictions.
He gave a letter of consent. Basically, he said he didn't have anybody add him, I guess.
Yeah, if you notice, there were a bunch of no's there, and there are convictions. And so, right off the bat, if someone does not disclose convictions, that means that you don't qualify for a license because you have to identify what your convictions are. And then, if there's a question about what they are, then questions can be asked once they're identified. So basically, it's lying on the application. If you lie on the application, you don't qualify for a license.
I still don't see where he lied. What did he lie about?
Because he did not include convictions that he has. And I believe that is outlined in the memo, that he did not include convictions. So, you know, you have to include them on the application. You can't try to hide them.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Senator.
I think where Alderman Langdon is coming from is that in the past, we were given that information that, yes, this isn't true, that here is A, B, C, and D that you didn't put on your application. That's what we received in the past. We did not get that this time.
This is the first time.
And I, when I read that too, I, I start going through my packet more than I needed to because I thought, you know, we're doing things differently now on the computer. I'm like, where am I missing this? Where is this? It's not in here. So I guess that's where, I can't speak for Alderman Langdon, but I think that's where he's coming from. And that's the way I felt too. But I mean, basically, we're denying it, what the city attorney is saying, because he lied on his application.
He said, right, he said no convictions, and he does have convictions.
Yeah. And I, I accept that, Attorney, but I've been, I started Alderman back in 2010. This is the very first time that I have not seen, you know, the convictions, why this, you know, all of it. Because a lot of times Alderman have different questions about, okay, what did he do here? And I may ask him a question on that one. So I'm just saying, this is the first time since 2010 that was given to us.
Understood.
Thank you.
In my case, it was 1981.
See any further discussion? If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item 3 is a renewal of beverage operators' license applications. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Would you like me to read all the names?
Sure, you can watch it.
We could approve them all individually if you'd like. Way to live.
I'll move to approve the renewal of the beverage operators' license applications for the 2021 through 2023 licensing year as listed under approved in the deputy clerk's memo dated June 3, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight zero. Motion carries.
I'm on it.
Item 4 is local license renewals for 2021, 22 licensing years. I'm wondering, did we get a, oh, I was talking to the deputy clerk. Did you get any information regarding that one, Attorney?
That I know.
Oh, okay. So there is a, are you okay with passing this?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Any person's gonna have that issue.
Okay. Okay. So we noticed that there was a inaccuracy, I call it, in the description of the addresses of one of the, one of the establishments on the list. And the attorney said we can pass it as it is, and they can add that to a future date. Would be the correct way to do it, otherwise, we have to give them notice that we're holding or denying it. It's a technical problem. It's not a problem in the way they're operating. It's just in the way that it's listed on the agenda. Not, it's more of a technical issue. Like to approve them as is, is the direction that the clerk, the attorney is recommending.
Okay. I'll move to approve the renewal of the Class A liquor and malt, Class B liquor and malt, and the reserved Class B liquor and malt applications for the 2021 through 2022 licensing year as listed on the clerk's memo dated June 7.
Is there a second? Second. The motion is second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item 5 is outdoor alcohol beverage service permit application. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
I'll move to approve the outdoor alcohol beverage service permit applications for the 2021 through 2022 licensing year.
Is there a second? Second. The motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item 6 is a outdoor alcohol beverage service permit, outdoor street service permit. Is there a motion?
I have a question for that. Since the license, the previous license were issued for 198 to 200 Main Street, this license was applied to that as well?
Or so.
Is that what they applied for? You know, one, the first one is an outdoor license for the service from the building. And I think it's like 10 feet. It is owned by the property owner. And then from that point, there's a few extra feet. So the one is the person applied for, yes.
The first one is for the rear of the building. This one is for the front of the building.
For the front. My question though relates to the memo itself. The previous licenses were issued, just issued and approved for 198 to 200 Main Street. A portion of this memo in the middle of the page also references 196, which is insisted with the other license. And that would not include 196. Okay. So that helps me determine my motion. Yes. Move to approve the outdoor alcohol beverage service permit, street third application for Empress Brewing LLC, doing business of Empressyrville, for 198 through 200 Main Street in Manasha for the 2021 licensing year.
Second. There's a motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote please?
Alderman Tomcrotty?
Aye.
Alderman Tedcrotty?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item seven is a land purchase and development agreement. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenix?
At this time, I'll move that council approves the land purchase and development agreement as presented between the City of Manasha and Hart Family Coffee for the sale and development of 901 Airport Road, along with the attached agreements. The price made 7,500, the due diligence period of 9-2 of 2021, with rights to extend to 60 days, commence construction by 12-1 of 2025, 21, I mean, yeah. Where'd I get that? Occupancy by 9-30 of 2022, closing and title work by 9-17 of 2021. Also, assignment written consent, I guess I'm not sure what that is.
All, all that stuff is within?
I realize that, but I'm doing it for the public.
Yeah, just, it, it notes on any assignment.
Okay. And then the last part is the tax exempt clause that we always put into these, right, revision.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote please?
Alderman Tomcrotty?
Aye.
Alderman Tedcrotty?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
James?
James?
Frozen.
Frozen.
He's frozen with the name Joe up. He's flashing Joe or Carol out there. There he goes.
Alderman Taylor?
James, yes or no?
I just came back on the computer with that.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item eight is the ad hoc committee for the comp plan update. Do we have a motion?
Mayor?
Alderman Sevenix?
I'll move for, this is for the committee, correct?
Yes.
I'll move for your recommendation, approval of the following residents, the ad hoc committee for the 2021 comprehensive plan update. Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Tomcrotty, Linda Stoll, Joanne Roush, Tim Vanderheiden, Larry Hossi, Luke Schiller, and Suzie Weber.
Second. The motion is second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Right.
Thank you. Director Schrader, if people or organizations or businesses are still interested in being a part of this process, can they sign up or contact you?
To be within the ad hoc committee or just in general?
Yes.
I would have to leave that up to the mayor.
These would be, so anyone could come to those, anyone could come to those meetings and participate in that manner during the meetings. I don't want to change the committee once we assign a committee. So if we're not ready to assign a committee, we probably should, but that will delay the process.
Alderman Nichols, did you want to be on that committee?
I do not want to be on that committee. The reason I asked the question though is, first, I want to thank all of those people who have volunteered their time to be on this committee. And as this is a comprehensive plan, I'm concerned that this isn't a comprehensive representation of our city. So that's my only concern going forward. And I encourage people to be part of the process, attend the meeting, and for the greater community to participate in any of the public input sessions that are available. And I look forward to what comes the results of the committee.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, if we could have a roll call vote please?
Alderman Tomcrotty?
Aye.
Alderman Tedcrotty?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first one is Resolution 27. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve R-2721, a resolution authorizing execution of the Department of Natural Resources Principe Forgiveness Financial Assistance Agreement.
Is there a second? Second. The motion is second. Is there any discussion?
I got a little scared there when you wanted to execute the Department of Natural Resources. Some people might have liked that.
Director, this is, comes to us from the National Utilities today, and Proudie, the general manager, is here. So would you help us understand more about what this is today and how this fund will be used?
The Safe Drinking Program had gotten several millions of dollars in February. I had put some information in your packet on that program. We had applied for this funding to put toward their lead service program on the private side. We had planned to get all of those replaced over the next 10 years. But with the funding that was available in this year's funding cycle, and we could be retroactive for 2020, we're hoping that we can get this program completed in two to three years compared to the aid that we had left remaining and get the lead out of all of the home services. And this is 100% principal forgiveness, correct? So this is a loan essentially that you will not have to pay back. Wonderful news. And happy to hear that we can get the lead replaced quickly and much sooner than we thought.
Yes. Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote please?
Alderman Tomcrotty?
Aye.
Alderman Tedcrotty?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item two is Resolution 28. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion for R-28-21. That's the resolution authorizing the insurance and sale of up to $997,383 for the water system revenue bonds. And that's Series 2021-C.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that, Mayor.
The motion is second. Is there any discussion?
Um.
Melanie, did you want to explain this one to me?
This is financing for the water main projects that we are doing in 2021. The council had awarded that bid in February. Started that work on Nicollet Boulevard already, and will be completing that work this summer. And so this agreement is just financing that project.
Any other questions? Ms. Rosie?
Paul, I have one.
Go ahead.
Melanie, do you have a, like a do, a completion date for that Nicollet Boulevard?
I thought they were going to be completed fairly soon.
Okay, so sometime by July. Okay.
You're asking specifically Nicollet Boulevard?
Yes.
They should be done by May or two, and the UPW reserves their concrete, maybe another couple of years, concrete.
July 1st will be done for sure.
With that work and then obviously the paving.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Corey, you can come. I had a phone.
July 1st, is there something that I'm?
No.
Five persons?
No, not at all.
It's a parade.
It's a parade.
Yeah, parade.
I'm sorry.
He'll let you know.
Do you want to do the same?
Oh, did you have something else, James?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Corey, well, Milwaukee Street classes resume in September?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch all of that, Alderman Taylor. Will Milwaukee Street be done by? Yes, that is the intent. Milwaukee, and I believe more are all scheduled to be done by the start.
All right, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote please?
Alderman Tomcrotty?
Aye.
Alderman Tedcrotty?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item three is Resolution 29. Make a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mayor. Thank you. I'll make the motion for R-29-21. That's a resolution authorizing participation in the We-Warn Mutual Aid and Assistant Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second. Are there questions?
Yes.
Since you're here, Melanie, why don't?
Yeah.
This is a mutual aid agreement that the state has set up. Many municipalities have participated in, on the water and wastewater side. It just provides another source should we have that emergency and we need a staff to help us in those cases. We do have one directly with Nina in Appleton as well that's separate of this, just because they are in close proximity on the water side, just in case we, either, any of us that would ever run into that situation. But this is on the state level. This additional resources should the wheels that crawl off the bus and protect them.
Any other questions?
There was a lot in this document about the organization of this group. So would, if this were approved, would Manasha be one of those communities involved in creating the bylaws and setting up how the organization function?
This is already in place. So I mean, as we leave our participation in this program, we would be able to provide feedback on this, to be part of that. But I mean, this has already been established for quite some time.
Okay. That wasn't clear in this document. It was the very beginning, like skeleton of what this organization could be. So thank you for clearing that up.
Any discussion? I noticed this did come from the Utility Commission, and normally it would be authored by me, and it somehow got missed and not authored. So if we could add that in, if anyone else wants to be an author, you're welcome as well. But we do need.
This is on the water and wastewater side, since both would be participating, not just the utilities.
Seeing no other discussion, if we could?
Well, I guess I have one more question. Since she brought up wastewater, and we manage our wastewater system, but yet it's treated on a regional basis. So is this something that Nina and Asha's Juris Commission would consider?
We did look to them, but we did talk about our system. One of you?
In, in the past, we have worked with, really, with the main. So Nina and Asha's Juris Commission is treatment bank plus the intercept. Um.
When you say we, were talking about the city or the Juris Commission? Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote please?
Alderman Tomcrotty?
Aye.
Alderman Tedcrotty?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenix?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item L is appointments. First item is the appointment of director of Public Works. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll make, you can answer your department. I'll make the motion for the appointment of Laura Youngworth to the position of Director of Public Works effective June 7, 2021, and enhanced vacation allowance.
Second, Mayor. Second.
Second. Any discussions? Do you have discussion, James?
Well, just wanted to second that.
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I guess I have a, I'm a little concerned about the enhanced vacation allowance. I don't know if you know what you're getting into when you apply for a position, ask for more vacation, even though you've worked other places. I've seen it happen to other, where people, my neighbor, he was, had five weeks of vacation where he was working. He got a new job and he only had two weeks. I said, you should have held out. He said, I wasn't, he needed the job. So I guess I'm disappointed and I don't feel we should be allowing enhanced vacation allowances to people because it may just, who knows, Corey may come back tomorrow and say, hey, I want another week. Oh, okay. No, that's, damn, he's younger. He'll want another week. You know, I, where does it end? So that's all I got to say. I'm hoping you guys support me too.
I got it. First, two minutes.
Alderman.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We've, we've given, in the past, enhanced vacation allowance. And I understand Alderman Repella and his concern. But seeing and knowing, and you know, being an Alderman since 2010, I just wanted to, you know, let it out there that there has been other vacation, enhanced vacation allowance to individuals for their job coming in. Thank you.
Mayor?
Alderman Sevenix?
Maybe my question's for the city attorney. Could you go to that memo?
Yes.
It says here, uploading holidays and vacations must be used each year, except that five days of vacation may be carried over to the next year and used before March 1. Can you explain that?
So if someone has, we'll say, 15 days of vacation, but they only use 10 days, they can carry over that extra five to the next year?
Let's, let's back up a second. This is in the personnel policy handbook.
Right.
It was authored by the council.
Correct.
Right.
And then those?
You'll see where I'm going.
Those five days have to be used in January or February, otherwise you lose them. And they're not paid out if somebody would quit either, those that are carried over. And it's up to that name, so it could be fewer.
I would like to possibly add a, an amendment. I think that after possibly a year, then we would give the incentive and not right off the bat by being hired. So in, sort of in a way, it's kind of a probationary time. And then that would be the incentive. So I would say that I would go along with, my motion would be, is go along with the additional five days after one year of service to the City of Manasha.
Okay. An amendment? Is there a second?
No second.
Okay. The motion is second. Any discussion on the amendment? Alderman Nichols?
That is right. My question's for her, so I'll wait. Um. We have a personnel policy that has been approved by the common council. Alderman Langdon referenced, I guess that's separate from the amendment question. Can you talk about having, what it means as an organization to have a handbook and then?
And then employees with agreements not in line with the handbook?
Why do I have a handbook?
We have a handbook in order to apply policies equally amongst all employees. I know for a while there, we were having quite a few requests for enhanced vacation because we had started having retirements, particularly of department heads, management positions, um, and folks that were, you know, interested in filling those positions didn't want to start out with, well, actually you would get no vacation until you were here six months. And so we were allowing or the common council did approve because there were requests for enhanced vacation. Then, uh, there was something that came up that concerned me because there was someone who, and this is a problem or could be a problem if you have two employees and one is in a protected class and one happens to negotiate better and they get an enhanced vacation more so than the other person who's in the protected class. Uh, you know, you have to try to explain that if someone would claim, file a discrimination claim or something. Anyway, so we looked at, um, changing the policy and we, um, at first did it for department heads and managers, um, trying to address the question of having more vacation when somebody started. And so for department heads, then we began with the three weeks. It would be prorated if it's a new employee, um, you know, depending if it started on like in November or something as compared to January. And then, uh, there's five days of floaters, so that's about four weeks. And, um, last, or I was gonna say last year, but we kind of skipped the year, didn't we? Was the year before that, 2019, that we caught up then with, uh, hourly employees and we prorated them as well. So we have both of those that are prorated, but so people do get advanced vacation right when they start. It is an issue that is, um, at least for my counterparts in HR and hearing all over the state, it's a common request for additional vacation. That's something very important to employees. Even our, um, police, that's one of the things we have difficulty with getting people to work overtime because they want time off. It's something very important to, you know, the next generation or generations of employees. So we, you know, do try to accommodate that. I can't tell you because I have not looked at it recently to see where we fall in line with the vacation that, you know, that we give. Um, it is something obviously that I could look into and bring back information if we're gonna change it as a policy on a whole. In this particular case, um, you know, we have someone who is requesting that the common council advance an additional week, so.
Yeah, and you brought up a couple of things in that explanation that I would just like to, uh, explore, given the leeway, um, to talk about vacation times in the context of this amendment. Because I might hear off from the context a little bit, you mentioned the value, um, that new employees see in more vacation time. And that is a constant challenge for employers. And I, um, know of that challenge. When I look at our policy, um, you, an employee receives fifteen days with five floating holidays, so a total of twenty days for one year or in a year. And then you need to work, you need to work, be employed by the city for six years to get another week. And another seven years to get five more days. And when I think about how, I mean, we used to have thirty career, thirty-year career employees, um, and we have a few of those remaining, but that is a very uncommon thing among the employees these days. And so the, our vacation policy is something that needs to be explored and researched between, um, public and private employers in, um, the area. And so with all due respect to Alderman Langdon's motion and Alderman Sevanek's amendment, I would like to separate these two questions. So first, vote on, um, approving Ms. Youngworth's appointment or appointment to the Director of Public Works. And then, um, talk a little more about the vacation policy.
I'll second it.
The motion, point of order.
Yeah, so there's a procedural thing that needs to happen here. I just want you to know where I'm coming from and hopefully we can get through that as a.
Yeah, my point of order is that you offer your amendments first. You can't make a motion for something and then, because that's not how a motion was read. So I already offered an amendment and that's how we should be voting.
Aye.
I want to know that we can separate.
If I could, if I could continue, do I still have?
Hold on a second. I want to rule on your point of order, basically, because it's a.
It's a tense which one.
So you can't really.
You can separate the original.
Or so you can't appoint her and then say.
Sure you can.
After two thousand twenty-one, the cross off to a flat.
Certainly, the more words.
The, the, um, the appointment and then the amendment, this amendment goes with the other, um, offering five extra days.
But the motion was to appoint her with, with the vacation, right?
And that's what they're asking.
So if you're gonna separate the two, now the, now the, you've already granted her five extra days and now the next motion is going to be to not grant those days for your. You take, give them to her and then take them away?
No, you just don't.
The first motion is to appoint with.
The appointment, no, that's it. That's the.
That's not how the motion was read.
The motion.
The request is to separate the original motion into two.
I'm doing that already with my.
The appointment would be one and the additional five days of vacation, assuming that there's an appointment, you gotta do the appointment first. And then the additional five days is another motion. You, you can separate them.
Yeah.
And then there's an amendment, so rather than just five extra days, it would be.
But where does that amendment?
The amendment goes towards the extra days.
How do you separate something?
Right, my mo, my, my vote on the original motion made me know because I don't get my clarification on the vacation.
Yeah.
That's my point of order.
Oh, we would vote on the amendment first.
We can do it that way and then separate it, doesn't matter.
I guess the way you'd have to do it is.
It accomplishes more than one way to get.
Okay, I can see it this way better. So it accomplishes kind of the same thing. So first we would.
You would take this one.
We would take up the amendment. And then depending on how that goes, you could separate the remaining question into two.
Let me say.
Okay.
We ruled a paper, whatever. So anyway, just I still have the floor.
Go ahead.
Because this is an additional request and this is a council appointment, we're making that decision. And I, I've so far only heard from maybe two council members, they have varying opinions about this. So that's why I offered my amendment, because even though we do have a standard, um, help me out with the, the.
Policy.
Policy book, um, the council, this is a council appointment and the request is being asked of us, so that's why we're making this motion. I'm, I want a positive vote on this and I think that it's very fair that we offer those five days, but here's the difference here, and I'm still trying to stick with the amendment, and that is, had this not been lateral entry, it would be different. And here's why. For instance, in the past, we had an attorney that had X amount of vacations and if he was gonna come here, he wanted those same amount of vacations, even though our policy said you can't. So the council said, okay, we'll do that if you become our attorney. And so we did that. So in this case, it's kind of the same thing. We want this individual, she wants additional vacation, I'm okay with that, but I want another year to go by because you already worked here, you knew what the policy was, and we are going out of our way to add additional vacation time by offering it a year after. In other words, kind of, I don't like to use the word probationary, but in a way of proving to us that that's a good decision on our part to offer it later on. Who knows, maybe that individual might leave in less than a year. Well, I mean, look at, look at, look at how many Public Works Directors we've had now in just the past, you know, eight, six years here. So that's why I feel this is fair.
Other discussion on the amendment?
I kind of agree with Stan, but I'd like to even lengthen that. Maybe after three years, we get that extra week, not after one year.
That would have to be a different. Different amendment and I'm sticking to the one year.
Did you have something, Alderman?
She's gonna leave after a year and a day.
Yes, I just, kinda on the amendment, kind of on the whole vacation subject and all, everything that we're talking here, um, Alderman Sevanek stating, waiting till the next year to get the other, the other week, maybe we, as personnel or HR, look at this vacation policy across the board for all employees, how it looks. I don't want to set a precedence here tonight, ruling on something and all of a sudden everybody wants some more time off. But I think we should review the policies and come back, review the committee, come back and then vote on something, completely separate from this for next year to get something going. As a sidebar.
And if I. And that, that is really my idea behind, um, separating the question because it provides us and the Personnel Committee to do our due diligence and make informed decisions about our overall vacation policy. Because if we approve the whole package tonight, then we're setting precedent for future, um, employees as well as we need to ask ourselves, what message are we sending to employees that we already have?
And I can answer that. Mayor? Here's the difference. This is a council appointment. There are only so many. And as far as I'm concerned, they don't fall necessarily in the guidelines of that personal policy handbook. We can do, because these are our appointments, we can make those changes when there is a specific request, like in this case. That's why I think the, the amendment is a good amendment and a compromise and fair.
And we don't.
They only have so many appointments and this isn't about the guy who's working the garbage truck. We don't, he, he follows under the guidelines of that personal policy handbook. This is a department head and not only that, not only is he a department head, but he is appointed by this council.
The department head would be appointed by the council. However, we're not engaged in the day-to-day management or review of that employee.
Maybe not, but it is our.
Therein lies the difference because not every single employee comes to us or with that request unless it comes through the employee handbook, which is for everyone.
Not necessarily. And in fact, if I wanted to tonight, I could make a, I can make an offer of another individual.
And I want to be clear, I'm not.
It's a council appointment.
I'm not opposed to enhance vacation time. What I'm concerned about is the process by which we make that decision.
And again, I'm gonna say, because this was a request, we're, look, we could either say yes or no, and I think the request is, is fair and I'm using a compromise saying, yes, I'll agree to that, but, but see your performance in a year and see if you stick around and when you do, you earned the additional five days of vacation.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. So there was a committee that brought Laura to us, correct?
There was an interview panel, yes.
Okay, so, um, I would like to know from any, I don't know who they are, uh, committee.
Inside of you.
Member. That what was talked about in the interview? And did she ask for an enhanced vacation while you were interviewing her?
There wasn't talk of compensation or benefits during that interview.
She didn't bring anything up, ask?
No, sir.
We may not be able to answer that.
Well, no, I've been in, 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 I was in a, a committee and, and hired a, in the past for our financial person and Mayor was in there, too, and, and she asked us if she could get vacation like starting right now. So I was wondering if that happened with this.
Is your opinion on that, or how that negotiation happens following the interview?
The, um, recommendation for appointment was done by the, um, committee. And then, uh, there were discussions after that. And what you see on this request coming from the person, it's not coming from the other people. I guess that's all I can say.
Right, my point. Yeah, that's all I.
It's your part, Alderman Langdon.
Yeah.
Person that's interviewing usually does not come up and say, I want another week. I mean.
You're asking certain questions and you.
But that did happen in, in, in the past.
You come back with other things.
This person did ask that in the interview.
That's why Stan's proposal makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor. Let's vote on the amendment, we can roll over, please, then we can move on to the next half.
Alderman Tompkins?
Aye.
Can I know what the amendment is?
Correct.
It's all blued everything.
So we are amending the original motion to follow with the five days of vacation after one year of service to the City of Manashia.
It's one year?
One year.
Not the end of the year?
One year.
One year.
One year, correct.
Aye.
Alderman Rappella?
May.
Alderman Nichols? Aye. Alderman Taylor?
He's moving.
Go ahead again, James.
Aye.
Oh, there you go.
Alderman Sevanek?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries seven one.
Okay, now we're on the motion as amended.
And I would like to separate that question. And I would like to separate that question, so vote on the approval for the appointment.
Okay, any discussion on, so the first half is the appointment, the second half will be the enhanced vacation.
Alderman Todd Grady?
Aye.
So we're voting on the appointment.
Vote on it first.
Okay. Alderman Hood Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
And then the second question is the enhanced vacation as amended.
Well, can I have, ask a question? How many weeks, how many days of vacation does she currently get right now?
Um, fifteen days and five floating holidays.
Twenty days so far, okay, all right. And she would have started with fifteen, that was the normal, starting at fifteen, uh... She wasn't given a break at the start?
Pardon me?
She wasn't given, uh, extra days when she, when she got hired?
Um, as a...
As a civil engineer, you're talking?
Yeah, yeah, in that position, it would have been ten days.
So we already gave her five extra days once she got hired?
That's my understanding.
Now she wants five more? Well, when's she going to stop? Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, and department heads and those that are salaried, really, no one does your work when you're gone.
My wife...
I know.
Those folks do, they're still there.
Yeah, no, I, I taught for 27 years, I know. Doesn't, uh, I don't have a secretary to do it. What I want to add again is that this is a department head's position, and to me, it's more deserving, and also too, in this case, it's a council appointment, I think, what do we have, four, maybe five appointments, period, out of over a hundred, so, we can make that, that decision, and I think it's a good one. I would encourage everyone to vote for it.
Messiah, we can have a roll call, please.
Alderman Todd Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Hood Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, one.
Item two is the reappointment of Candace Russell to the Board of Health, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve your reappointment of Candace Russell to the Board of Health for the term of May 1st, '21 through May 1st, '24.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to recess?
I'll make the motion that we recess.
Second. Alderman Nichols asks if we'd like to have public comment before that.
Yes, sure.
Yes. Is there any more wishes?
Thank you for allowing me to speak rather than having a debate. I just wanted to follow up with a few questions of things that were brought up tonight. The first is regarding the comprehensive plan and the ad hoc committee, I would ask that those meetings be posted online, that the public is aware of them, and not just the one or two visionary meetings that general public can attend, so that you do get an overhaul, overall opinion from members of the community. Regarding the land purchase agreement that you just approved with the Hart Family Coffee, I just want to say I'm disappointed. Granted, that parcel of property has been vacant for a very long time, but the idea was that it was going to be marketed in conjunction with the adjacent property, and that adjacent property was supposed to have the pavement removed, so everything was green space, and it would be one, they developed a lot. That never happened. I blame the owner or the marketer for that. And I am asking that either the planning commission or the common council renovate or revise our building code for commercial property, that we have a minimum square footage. We have it for housing and garages. This is a 500-square-foot parcel, or property on this parcel. I mean, the Empire State, okay, and they're not going to break ground until December, and completion won't be until the following September. The Empire State Building was built in 18 months, you know, so it's like, this is 500 square feet. It's just, it's kind of ridiculous to me, but I know, we got to sell. We're desperate. Um, third, regarding the whiting mill memo, a lot of discussion took place, I do want to emphasize, I do think Alderman Sevigny had a very good point regarding the coming before the council. A very similar incident happened with the Brit. That sat for months before anything was done. It was also an emergency fire, it was something unpredicted, so the mayor could have called the special media. He didn't. Community development just went ahead, and I think that is wrong. Regarding the check register that was approved, there is an item in there for, I believe they're both, well, it's page eight, it's already been approved. One was the senior center update, the reader board sign, I'm assuming that's the sign out here, also a sign for the Jefferson Park, the new entrance and gate plans are signed. Both of those are different fonts. When you go to the public works facility, that was just built, another different font, the roundabout's a different font. If we're branding our community, we should have an identity that you can relate to. I don't know who's picking out the signs, even with the senior center sign, I'm wondering if it went to community development, as a monument sign, or is that a poll sign, or what that is, but I just think aesthetically, it's, it's not working. And then, I guess, lastly, you're going to be going in the closed session for 225 Main Street, I'm assuming that's the building next to the bridge, beautiful brick building. I have no idea what you're up to, it was extremely vague. I'm just really nervous because we keep getting ourselves into projects and we have no money for them. And everything is put with the RDA, which basically, last time I saw, was in debt in the red, so it's going to be handed over to them, which doesn't report to the council. Who knows what's going to happen, and it'll be another tip and another burden on the city. So, this city is in debt, and I know I have to stick to the agenda, so have a good evening, thank you very much. Nice seeing you all again.
Thank you. Any say here, anyone else wish to make a comment?
I'm Corey Simon, I live at 2517 Godling Way. A couple of issues that we have recently come across, one, we found out that you guys want to put a, maybe a walking trail through our front yard, I want to get it on, on the record that we want to be able to have discussions about that. I did drive around all of Manassas, and there's only one area that you have a walking trail through front yards, and I think that's on Highway 114 from Hackrot to Oneida Street, and I believe you guys added, actually rolled more, more property to that area. If we would have known that, and I, I really would like to know when that was in the planning, because if it was after 2008, I should have been notified, because I bought my property in 2008, and I was never notified. So if it was before that, then I can see that I wasn't notified because of that, but before that. Also, they are starting to do some, another division in the Woodland Hills area back there. My understanding is they want to do 110 houses back there, and some across the pond from us. I do have a meeting with the water system specialist of the DNR, because I know that there is more wetlands than what they're saying back there. I did talk to Mr. Hagan, which, I don't know if anybody knows Mr. Hagan, he's not believable sometimes, so there is a lot of concerns. A lot of people can come to this meeting, but we want to make sure that it gets on the agenda of discussion, that we'd be able to talk about it, and make sure that they're proper. When you look at our property and the properties that are on Godling Way, the walking trail is huge in the aspect that, if we would have known that that might have been in there, we would have probably set our house back further. I mean, it'll be right on top of my front door almost, and it's a big concern on that aspect. Another concern about the walking trail is if somebody gets, walking trails usually are, not even a walking trail, it's a trail, so that's going to bring a lot more traffic. Right now, if you go down Hernan, it's a cut through through Appleton to 114, I mean, it is really starting to get busy. When they did Midway Road, they did some work on Midway Road, and that became a really big cut through, and now everybody's using it. The big concern, though, is a trail is usually eight to 10 feet, sidewalks are usually five feet, so you got bikers, you got rollerskaters, all that stuff. If somebody gets hurt and falls on my property, most likely it's going to be me, not the, the city of Manassas, which is a huge, huge concern for us. And then the housing that they want to put on the other side of the pond. The other side of the pond has a lot more wetlands than what we, what they are saying. I don't think you can get a 26-foot road in there and then 100, or what, 1,100 square foot houses that they want. Right now, there's eight houses on the pond, and they want to put 15 more, which is twice as many, so half the ponds are already developed, and now you want to, they want to put 15 more. My understanding is they don't quite own that property yet with Mr. Hagan, but that's what my understanding is. My wife has talked to our Alderman, I don't know which one that is. So you talked to my wife, Melanie?
Of course, I even emailed her today.
Yep, and she emailed you, so, but it is a huge concern for us, and we really want to know what's going to go on, and we would like to be in discussions with them.
Thank you for coming, Ty.
Gordon Ray is here, he used to play basketball with Stan.
Who didn't?
I was much better.
Not saying much.
So at this point, is there a motion to, to recess two committees? All right.
We did our Stan and Mark.
And Mark, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand at recess.